The day is January 3rd, 2012, time is 7:30 PM. And we're meeting in the District of County Council's Hall. This time, the question myself, I'm a page from the end, I probably twice in this person.
Terry?
Here.
Daryl?
Here.
Jamie?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Glenn?
Here.
First thing on the agenda, the Republican Administration's Senate Fifth. Uh, breaker, meeting, two to three. Three of you are here, and I'll be first there. Repeat a motion.
I'll make a motion. Sorry.
Here.
Blake?
Hi. Here. Hi, have you guys?
Daryl?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
As you tell, we've got two new motion.
Sarah.
And one more. These are the new two years to this. New business, election council president. If you're not in my, or you're not a nation, or say.
I would like not make that call.
Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions, new members? Next item on the agenda, designation of newspaper for the plans. And we will make, I think, parties in the past designate them as daily news, daily and weekly.
That's our audience, that's who, sorry, was there an issue about using the weekly for a second name, getting some of our announcements out?
You know, it's been always done, and I asked you today, it's kind of goes as well. I think that is.
I mean, we were having an issue with that immediately, did you speak of the second publication and what they had?
We did run into that situation, where we needed time to spread the news, and we had a late, as time was, we could issue. But, this is why.
That happened one, not before, four years?
I just wanted to bring it up.
But I think, ninety-nine percent of the time, you know.
What is the official title of the nation, is that a good name?
Times.
I guess we're pretty good.
Well, I, that's our local paper, this, that's, that's more, since we're, most likely to achieve, um, I think, up to.
Do you make the motion?
I can, uh, we're ahead.
I'll make a motion that we designate the current daily news as the newspaper for 2012.
And, and the time?
And the time, as the senator.
One second. Terry?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, we've done this for the last couple of years. In the past, we always had, organizations come to the council at all times of the year, requesting contributions. And we've taken a lot of time on the agenda, these requests. So what we've decided to do is just set one special council meeting to take these requests to work. And, you know, it seemed to work. And what we've done, we've got these two minutes, to ask the people to wait. And I do those, continue on, we disentraped it, do something different, which is, we have the task, and if it works, we can add that.
I think the way we've done it over the past couple of years has been the most convenient way. We hear it all at once, and then we take a moment to digest it, come back.
We haven't come at one meeting or one special, I didn't know that.
Not special.
Yeah, so you have a, in a word, more. That's fine, too. Um, I, I think the solid format, I think the format's a good one. It's, that's, helpful, they have, and, having been on the council before, I know that this is a relatively new phenomenon. And through the, our partners come and ask me the things, and I support, I know it wasn't the case, but, um, and then, and I know before we have, and we haven't come strategically, we've asked somebody the same question, so I think, having format that they can bring ahead of time, and so forth, is, is a, is a good procedure, so I compliment on that, and it worked recently, like, I don't see reason why we didn't.
It has, and there's any questions, or the request forms, is incomplete, is not addressed by, is responsible.
So when have you done this?
We've, we've done it in January.
I was looking, like, the 23rd? Does that have time to give anybody an announcement?
Not really.
Talk together?
See, last, over the last four years, we knew the same council was going to be hired, and so we kind of held up this year.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have something to, we won't do a new budget, are we talking about this year's budget?
Yeah, we can.
And if you look in the back page, it shows you where the funds come from, would you see what you're seeing?
Well, I would think you'd want to give somebody an explanation, but you don't listen, and you don't have time to prepare.
We want to, um, play big, work nice, of course. I believe there's something, if I were.
Does it, does it take that long, that we, you, you work, your director and Jamie, you stretch out that?
No, I think this, what we have here, a time to give the questions, ask them the answers, during a couple of hours.
Well, wouldn't they be able to submit this ahead of time? If, if we're going to give you these questions, I, that's what I think, if they give us ahead of time, they would fill out, send it to us.
Review it, and then we have a special meeting.
Then they give, basically, a presentation.
Yeah, they give a sort of presentation, I would think, for some reason. For us to be able to ask, not be, our patients.
Next, the insurance meeting is probably the second longest meeting.
Really? You have that many people?
Well, the list is on the back page.
Yeah, I saw, well, yes, we have to.
List is who we, we accept as the introductions.
Yeah, it's open, everyone wants to do it.
I got that.
This is something else we've done, and we pay, we pay for it, and that's the main thing.
So, we need to set something about this.
How about February 20th? That's two weeks after our February.
We got to give it a little time. February 20th, we'll take seven months.
And then you go on, in here, thirty minutes a month.
You see, we, I, since the first year, we've, second, third year, we've served.
Yeah, that's right.
Now, you can make that at any time you'd like to. You can special meetings, that's what I'm like, right?
And, how?
By the 16th, you say, that's good. You work for six, you know, so you do that, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, if at all costs, we're visiting, we're discussing something. Sure. Do you want to, number, do a motion, for the February 1st, 16th, special meeting.
Also have this request of the, let's present it today.
Sure.
We do two day, have a big, what's it?
What do you want, you have water?
Yeah, please.
What time is that? Please.
I got, you see, I got.
I'll draw a motion, and make a new motion, I believe, of a special meeting on the 13th of February, 16th. Second.
Terry?
Yeah.
Blake?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
I'll always schedule that later.
Daryl pulling that.
Next item on the agenda, discussion on changing time for the first council meeting. This is correct, it's laid out here, it's following a city election, the first, January, the first meeting in January, probably the city election. And why it's done back in early, and why it was changed to Saturday. Thank you.
I wasn't around, I didn't know.
Right. We believe the council is going to be determined, the right to schedule, council time, sorry. The mayor and the special council, and the county council, it's very, it's very, to be, you would want to change it. Well, that's the way it's made up here, by the way. We just amend the ordinance, I'm right, it's, it's the will, council lot, prepared orders, that, that.
But, do, are you preparing the ordinance to go what time?
That's, that's what, if you, any change that you want, if it's, if it's the state with what has been asked at seven o'clock, I would just modify the ordinance, call it ordinance, to the seven o'clock.
Is it possible for us to establish the first one, in January, and let the others be set by council? I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, now, one point in time, 7:30 was the appropriate time, and, life has changed, from that point to now, and people now think seven is a better time, for whatever reason.
Two, four years ago, it was six o'clock.
So my point is, if we establish a, a given time for the first one, and allow the council to establish a subsequent reading for certain time, the date would always be the first member of the month, keeping that consistent, but allowing the timing to be then adjustable to condition.
I don't, I don't see the immediate problem, the, the, I mean, this comes into effect as statutorily, the requirement that the fiscal body meet at the first day, it was, it used to be the first Monday, following the election, by statute, and they, they recently changed that to be the first day of the day for council meetings. And that statute, though, I do not believe that there's a time of course, it's just as established by council, so what you could do is, what you could do is, is, at the first council meeting, make it known through notice, via the ordinance, that it would be at seven o'clock, but then have your yearly meetings adopted at that council meeting with times that, that they would be held, so you're, you're really, instead of going infinitely at that time, you just set up the twelve month calendar.
Right, that's what I'm, yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't put in, we don't, we don't follow this, because each month at seven thirty, I didn't know, put seven o'clock in there, and then, eight years from now, somebody's saying, gee, that's a long time, needs to be eight p.m.
Yeah, you're right, rather to modify it, it makes sense, and, there may be, you know, this, this body will, come summertime, six o'clock would be better, you know, during the summer months, you'd hide away, but, but, as long as you, I, I do think, though, especially in, you said with some other statutes out there, the requirement for the Treasury Office to notify the public as to what regular scheduled meetings are, you know, council should adopt, what your, what your meeting times would be for the year, subject to change. So, if, if, if that's the motion, to modify the current ordinance, to make it seven o'clock, and then allow for, and then create language so as to allow for the council to adopt its meeting schedule for the remainder of that year, I, I'll put language together, that better.
I'm not, that's what I'm saying, I'm not making much, I'm just offering that as for the special, for people.
Makes sense.
Indiana, both, I was down, that, actually, Indiana, both, both, just being, free, just produced.
Yeah, they really, they've actually really loosened it the last couple of years, but it used to be the first Monday, and, you know, many bodies don't need them, but a lot of them need them Tuesdays, but, but the statute, yeah. What's, we're putting it in paper, what's the matter, if this is announced, which month?
A lot of people get used to what we do, put newspaper, times we change, right now, or is, you know, I mean, newspaper, some may not change, but that's a little negative side. People get used to having to answer meetings, sort of, nothing, you know, all of a sudden, the first Monday in January, probably the question, we, we come to have our, like, reason.
And Blake, there's also the ordinance right now that requires seven thirty, it's, I think you just want to, I think the intent, as I understood it, was to sort of bring it, current with the times, and, and I think, what, if I understand Blake correctly, is to give, give the body a little bit more leeway as to when they, they set it, so just set it for that year, and then, and next January, if you, if you would like to change the time, it's, it's up to the council to do so. Sure, is your current ordinance that sets our times, uh, where we set it in the ordinance? No. You just, set time?
It was a order, sure.
Because we, we, yes, we didn't do it, work to, work us, do work by, most people work this one, it's, it's.
Well, most people, so if I would announce, and it was only because of, it's not being reasonable, and so, it's, you know, but, we have four violations of ordinance, so now we're in place, and we're going to make sure that it's safe, and, so let's get the ordinance kicked, so it can't be.
So I stay with the Indiana, the Indiana, for, so that's, I mean, seven, I mean, seven p.m.
So, so do you have the January meeting, and then allow the, the council to adopt the schedule, and then?
And they don't want people saying they want to change it. Right now, we have a worst meeting Friday, and we have two occasions in four years, Rand has passed.
If we start five to ten minutes late, that's fine.
Right, that's, we have that time, and I move it up earlier at seven o'clock, it'd be, I'm like.
We're on past six, why are you talking? Okay, so are you ready for motion here?
Yes.
Make a motion of, uh, change the ordinance to seven o'clock, and also, including the ordinance of the, uh, council, will agree on a set time, for the remainder of the year.
And subsequent?
And sub, yes. So it's, if I understand it correctly, you're, you're modifying it for the first, first meeting of the year.
Around the election, you can set.
Oh, you actually, it would be seven p.m., and, and then all include language, allows the city council to adopt the time that they wish, uh, in, every day, or, and that's, that gives bridge of the ability to modify the brass of the meeting.
Any more discussion? Eric, not, no, popular.
Glenn?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
The council, this item on the agenda, Gethin, going to, what it is, is amending towards 2012 national, amending ordinance by 2017, match eight, versus speaking on Lane Street, from East Main, to front of Tri-Plaza. Now, Lane Street, and reconstructed, from First Street to the bypass, it was designed for thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. This could be kind of confusing, you know, but you understand why, on two lane, thirty mile an hour, or three lane, it would be thirty-five. The traffic control committee decided was they supported the, leading at thirty-five mile per hour. So, due to that, right now, the ordinance covers completely, uh, to be able to force the thirty-five mile per hour speed limit, we have to change the ordinance to set it to our first rate, thirty-five. The order from that third, it's supposed to thirty-five, uh, correct, yes. It's currently correct, we go to thirty-five.
Have the, if ordinance has to start, if, if a car is going in excess of thirty-five mile an hour, and the speed limit, whether it's close to thirty-five or thirty, or this remains thirty, if they're going past thirty-five mile an hour, um, they still.
Sure.
So, you know, my question is, why is it necessary to actually change the ordinance? Because it's, you know, it's not going to be any expensive to advertise this, and do all this.
It gets in conflict with one another, even for a reason.
You'd change, change the signs?
Yeah, I guess you'd change the signs.
It's more expensive, change the sign.
Basically, large ones, change the sign.
Brand new signs.
Brand new signs were about ninety dollars a piece, and there's probably.
Well, how many?
Eight of them, they're probably, you're looking at probably seven hundred fifty bucks to change them out.
How much has it been a cost us to print this a couple of times in newspaper?
Fifty bucks.
Blake, I had him fifty dollars.
Could change to, to. So, was it, basically, he took thirty-five, but the ordinance said thirty?
Yes.
I was just at, oh my god.
And we're talking about, I can't tell, extract the signs and brand, this is for I don't know, I had a little bit of anxiety.
Well, that's the point, even if, even if it's thirty, it's thirty-five, you're not going to price off anybody at that.
I'm not sure if my ordinance is going to force a law.
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, probably, really, because the ordinance has said what it says, if you're not the speed limit, you may have signs that say otherwise, so, you know, who bears the problem, deal with this prosecutor's office, or courts, you know, someone inside, or back there. I was, I was obeying the speed limit, but then, when I actually pulled, pulled over the, the ordinance, and said, hey, I'm supposed to go thirty, and you were going thirty-five, it just doesn't, it, it's, it's something that should be correct. One way or the other, we need to get in some.
And I think it's most expensive, change the ordinance, keep it advertising, and, as far as.
I make a motion to pass one of those 2012, actually.
Who's free?
Second. More discussion?
Glenn?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Now, who would move further? I swear, can we suspend the rules or something like this, even though it's always fine, we have the unanimous to suspend rules, and go with the third rule.
I know historically, there is, there's been a, an application to use that.
That's what we've always done.
Correct. I, I believe that, my opinion that a properly noticed ordinance, as long as you find by Robert's rules, and, and so he moves to suspend the rules, and it's the unanimous, then you can suspend the rules, and go into the next reading. I know that there's been applications in the past where there's fine, or money's involved that could do it the same reading, I, I don't know that to be the case, um, I don't know any law, raise that.
Has it been, has this ordinance been advertised?
No, it hasn't, we've already waited in the second, third reading, asked.
I would think, we're, we're, I haven't advertised it for a few weeks, yeah, I was saying that, we've operated, what, several months this way, I guess we could, whatever month or so, around, two months, right?
Can you ask the council?
Uh, yes, I have a question.
Oh, we need to move on.
Yes.
Oh, we did, yeah.
Yes, um, do we need to, uh, make official, make public, announce, the council appointments, if you'd like, to the other commissions and committees and responsibilities we have as councils?
I, we have in the past, I mean, last administration, this administration, last of the years.
I, I think it's, it's no harm, no foul, I mean, I, you know, identifying who's going to serve, or the commissions, and, as much as. Especially necessarily have the public members that have it in part of the minutes.
Yeah, that was my point. And I, and I'm not talking about mayors necessarily, as you know, I'm talking about the council itself, making the, on record at least, as to who is responsible for carrying on the, the other obligations, the appointments that we have there.
I believe we did do that four years ago, council appointments. I think we did. I think we had.
I thought we did too, but I.
I would, I would recommend, for no other reason than, and this, this does happen, and we've dealt with this in the past, mayors, that it becomes difficult at times, because you have staggered terms, sometimes it becomes difficult to identify when a particular appointment was appointed, to go back to the city council to look to see.
Sure.
If it doesn't help out, so I, I don't, if you did it, especially if you did it four years ago, I highly recommend doing it again, and then as some of these agencies come up the following years.
There will be.
Then, then you do the same thing.
Right. So is it, uh?
Yes.
Question then, is it appropriate for us to vote on the two ones, or can we just by consensus say, here's, here's where we, and then we have a consensus nod, whatever it might be, and do that?
Let's see, council. Yeah, I, I, I think that if you, there's a couple of ways to connect habits. If you have a consensus, and you'd like to read off those appointments, and then vote on them collectively, and you have a majority vote on those appointments, then you're done.
Right.
If you don't have a majority, then you probably going to have to go.
Correct. Well, ask my fellow council members, is it okay if we do this by a black and manner?
I'd rather.
Then, Mary, I. In the plan commission, city plan commission, the council has three appointments, the mayor, I think, has four. And then, serving on the plan commission will be from the council, myself, and Blake, the mayor, and also Bruce Rockover, being reappointed, reappointed four year, unless somebody resigns or can't continue to serve, and we reappoint, that's how it's typically. Um, we're reappointing Jeff Steele to the nine one one board. On the solid waste board, Terry Wagner, serving as ex-official member of the EDC Corporation, Blake Omera, serving as ex-official member on the Main Street, Greensboro, Main Street, what's it called, Main Street? Main Street, Main Street, Greensboro, Terry Wagner, serving on the Tom Taylor board, Daryl Holy, serving on the area plan commission, myself and Teddy, serving on the fifth board, Daryl Holy, and Ken Dorn. I think those are the, the, the total number of. I, I guess then, if having been the nomination, nominations, if we have a second in the book, then it would, it was the complete right.
Correct, you would, if you have seconds to that motion, and if you have authority, vote on all of these collectively, that would satisfy. Second. Any more discussion?
Terry?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes. And as wait to serve on the personal, any, any tax. This is, we have Terry, and we serve on the private. This is, this is.
I need to give a overview of board work, to me, for thirty seconds or less. Basically, all we really talked about this evening was bids were open for the administration building and the lab case work. Thirteen bids were open for the administrating, administration building, and I believe four bids were open for the lab case work, and those are all going to be taken into consideration. And we're generally make a recommendation of board work next month. Other than that, so we had a, you know, Chief, are you going to speak to?
I, I, I can, I, I kind of hand it out.
Just want to speak to that.
The paper that I handed out earlier before meeting, I did have a firefighter resigning his position, in fact, on January seventh, it's been over, it's a little over six years, over six years, so. Talking with the mayor, with the budget situation like it is, we're going to hold off filling that position for right now, until we get our budget cleared, and maybe don't bring somebody on, get into a bad situation, and then have downsides or something, so.
Thank you.
Lincoln Street, we are still trying to wrap up some radio interconnect between the three signals that are out there. The radio study's been done, the equipment's been identified, we just need to get it ordered and installed, and we'll be able to finish the Lincoln Street project. We're still working on acquiring right-of-way parcels for the Van Dalia Road project, which we hope to start in spring. And then today, we just got our notice of award for our two million dollar DR one grant from Boeckra, which is what we're paying for our Gas Creek project, which has got the regional retention ponds and an additional five-foot diameter pipe under the railroad over at By Main and Lincoln. That project will completely effectively lower the hundred-year flood elevation at Main Street by three feet, which is pretty significant. So, working on that. The mayor's also had been looking at redesigning the S curve on Bear Show on my A and W. I'm sure we'll be talking to the acres about that, will take some additional right-of-way to do that. We've taken care of a couple other miscellaneous drainage projects around town, but.
The A and W project here.
Do you want to talk about that?
About A and W.
I thought Van Dalia right-of-way.
Let me talk about the A and W. You got the A and W today?
I thought I got the A and W. Okay.
You did, sir.
And, well, we're also going to, I'm also designing a water line for Rick Danny, so we can move a sixteen-inch line around the northwest side, from Lee's Inn over around the Moscow Road. And then the last thing that we want to try to get done next year is the block of Lincoln Street that wasn't redone, because there's been some drainage issues there, that we want to get redesigned. But we have to get in dot to say we're completely done with this Lincoln Street, so they've not released that yet because we still got that radio interconnect issue, but hopefully we'll get that in filed, and we can put some drainage structures in, and look at the picture, certain problem block area. We've got a ton right there to keep showing up. That's what we've gotten, working, working on right now.
Question? I, I, I may not know whether it's just to you or to the street department, but, um, one, there may be more than this. I'm aware of one.
Okay.
Consequence to the detour of Lincoln Street was being worked on. At the corner of East and Walnut, and it's the, the, yeah, it's the northeast corner, that was a problem to begin with, when things kept getting layered on top of it, but that, people were cut on that so much, and it has created a huge hole there, and I don't know what can be done, but really something needs to be done about that corner, in terms of repairing, building on the curb, or wherever you want to, whatever's necessary, to make it better, because it's.
I don't know that there was a lot of the image done to the curb because of that, but I know a lot of people went over and went back, you know, between the sidewalk and curb. I think markets filled that in a little bit, but.
So, the curb, the curb remains where it was that prior to the detour.
Yeah, I understand, it was always low, it just became worse as the, the hole got worse, is what I'm saying.
The whole traffic curve.
Was there and has continued to be a huge hole there, at least the last time I might have seen it.
Well, they just, may still be running open, I mean, it doesn't take much for a car, or something like that, whether we have once they get off that.
So there's nothing you can do about it, quickly.
Well, under the reconstruction, the curb, or entire area problem between the two drives.
No, it's on the corner.
I know, but I mean, there, there's a lot to do there, and if you're trying to get the curb back up six inches like it would be, then you've got problems of being higher than the sidewalk and everything, and so it's kind of a snowball thing, that you wind up with drainage problems, or if you start to put the curb all the way back up where it was, you really need to build the streets back down to get enough curb face that people are going to jump in.
Okay, Mark, what do you suggest to build that hole back up where it was, you're saying?
I think the problem is, it's such a narrow radius, and any truck traffic you get, once the hole's been created, they just tend to continue to waller it out time to time again. Like I said, or Gary mentioned, the curb is the same elevation it has been for ever and a day, but when the people didn't follow the official detour, a detour where they weren't supposed to be through construction there for about eight weeks, they just walled everything out behind the curb.
There's this big market, it's seething that one. It's been sideways. I mean, it'll basically easier to drive across, at least you don't have a big muddy hole there.
We got close.
That, that could be something we, we look at for our, for our ADA transition point, and maybe one of the intersections that we target first. For those of you that don't know, if you're a city with over seventy employees, you have to come up with an ADA transition plan, which removes barriers to handicap access, and that includes sidewalk ramps in all your intersections, which we don't have, but we have budgeted some money to address one or two corners this year. If that's one that's going to be a problem, we can look at doing a wider ramp there that might, because you don't need. Yeah, I heard you take the curb out, because it's got more pavement for your landing area, so.
I'm not trying to create a problem, I just.
We, we are, we are aware of it, we've, and we've, we have filled it in a couple of times, but if it's continuing to happen, I've not heard another complaint, but we can, we can work on addressing it.
Yes, you're welcome. In the audience.